Good evening, members of council. Ladies and gentlemen, staff, I see that we have quorum and I call this regular meeting for the Town of Palom Committee of the Whole to order for Monday, May 7, 2018. It's been moved by Councilor Papp that the agenda for the May 7, 2018, regular meeting of Committee of the Whole be adopted as circulated. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Councilor Durley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to request that we move 4-5-1, the Poth Street culvert failure update report up to before department reports. We have some folks that traveled a long distance in order to give us some information and out of courtesy, I think we should allow them to say their piece because they have a long way to go home as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I don't know if there's any other. I see some representatives of 4-1-3 here as well. So 105 Highway 20 East. Can we just move that forward in community planning, deal with that one first?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilor Papp, will you move that?
I'll move that, yeah.
So that we move 4-1-3 immediately into the community planning and development so that it is first on that agenda. Okay, so let's take a vote on both of those. All those in favor of Councilor Durley's motion? Thank you, carried. And all those in favor of Councilor Papp's motion? Thank you, carried. Any other changes to the agenda?
No.
There being none, I call the question on the amended agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries as amended. Thank you. Next, we move to disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. Are there any conflicts of interest? Councilor Kersey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will declare conflict of interest with respect to 4.1.1, specifically 163 Port Robinson Road. My wife is the signatory and shareholder of the company that owns this piece of property, so I will be vacating during the discussion around that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Can that be so noted? Any other conflicts of interest? Can that be so noted by the clerk in the minutes? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to nine, sorry, last meeting we had nines. 4-5-1, Poth Street culvert failure. We have a report on that. Sorry. Here we go. It's been moved by Councilor Papp that Committee of the Whole received the Public Works Report, Poth Street culvert failure update, May 2018, for information. We also have Mr. Spreet and Mr. Burt here who are working on this and would be able to give any updates to council. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Clementio if you can just kind of give us a quick update of status and then see if, I don't know if our guests want to say anything or if you want to invite them to say something. Ms. Clementio.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I would like to invite them up if they could. And Derek Young joins us, the manager of engineering as well, in case any questions come up. So as was requested, an update while we're continuing to travel down the path of trying to find a solution for the failed culverts on Poth Street. In our brainstorming to try to see what other alternatives we could explore since our last update report, we turned to Spreet and Associates, very familiar, very experienced firm and familiar with our drainage here in Palom. I've done a lot of municipal drain work here. So we thought we would open the door. I had a conversation with John Spreet to see whether there was some opportunity to look now at the waterway upstream, to see whether there was some more wiggle room to try to reduce the span that we would be trying to cover with that road crossing. So if we could change the characteristics of the waterway, of the municipal drain, whether that could result in some cost savings in the construction. So I put it in the report typically not where you would start with a replacement of this nature. We don't typically start by saying we're going to open that drain up in the drain design, but at this point, we thought we would open this up to see what opportunities could arise. So we forwarded the information to Mr. Spreet that we had on file, which is the Geotech report that AMAC came to present on, the designs from GM Blue Plan. We informed GM Blue Plan of what was happening and kept that conversation going. And Mr. Spreet, if you'd like to come up with you as well, Steve, and maybe give a little bit of update on what your approach was. But generally speaking, has come with some promising news. And I think I summed it in the report, at this point, we'll talk about some estimated numbers. But at this time in conversation with the Treasurer and the CAO, I didn't make a recommendation to pursue this construction in 2018, but simply that we would continue with the design work and hope to get something so we have a good solid number for the capital ask for 2019 construction.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spreet and Mr. Burt, please come up to the podium.
Right here?
Yes.
Maybe I'll start. Okay, well, yeah. I've been at council meetings in Palom. I enjoy all council meetings with other councils and we work. Spreet Associates started in 1961. I started in 1970. I've been working here years ago on the Big Creek drain, which is a municipal drain. I came down early with Steve and we have seen a soils report from AMAC and we have Canadian Bridge Code and come up with what we think would be a solution to the waterway opening that we need at Poth Street. So we spent a nice afternoon in the sunshine in Palom. Actually, both of us took a little wander up through that pipe on Poth Road and the deterioration is completely evident of why that structure failed, not because of too much water, but because of deterioration in the steel pipe, which is very common. I looked at the report plan, 1973 was when that drain was last worked on, and it has a slew of recommendations for road culverts and many of them are twin-pipe culverts. And there's different issues back then. We did a culvert in Strathroy area back then with the same type of pipe. They were galvanized at the time and nobody could predict. They used to say corrugated culverts are probably a 20-year life cycle, but the thicker multiplate and heavy-duty steel-gauge pipes would last longer. Well, the ones that have happened here are from that vintage. And we actually did a new pipe in North Middlesex and it was from the 1972 vintage and, well, one of the pipes, bottom totally corroded, rusted out of it. The product maybe lived its life, but it needs to be replaced now. When we go through that pipe, you can, you just see pieces of metal laying around that provide no structural adequacy. But what the focus of today was, we came with some prods and some boots and we took a look at the culvert, two culverts upstream on Big Creek. One of them was on Balfour Road and I understand it's just, we sized it a few years ago and I think it's been replaced. And so we compared what we would find, knowing what the soils report said at Poth. So we went up to that one. And then there's another farm, old private owner crossing, two six-foot pipes and the Balfour one are two seven-foot pipes. And I'll leave Steve to say, conditions very much the same. And a couple of other points, too. When you walk through there with your boots on, it's hard to believe that when you're standing on the bottom of the steel and you only have six inches of water up your boot, you wonder, how could this old pipe have possibly settled? Certainly, there's no evidence to us that pipe has settled, sort of faded away into the ground. It's just, it's just plain worn out. Corrosion and steel are archenemies. So we think it's very, very good, we think it's a very good idea with machine time and the proper type of contractor. We don't need to have any specialty equipment for piles to support that pipe. Working together with this company here and the previous owner of the company, On Globe, it was actually Dominion Soils, he's been working hand-in-hand with us ever since '61 or '62. So we have some experience and we think that there is a solution. It's called digging a hole, uncovering the old pipe, which is not worth a powder to blow it up. You would just, you've got to get rid of the old pipes. They seem to be standing tall like they did, but it's, they're just so corroded. And the steel plates are corroding at the base and now the soil from above is dropping down in. They're beyond salvation.
So your recommendation then, because there's something in the report about possibly three, three-meter culverts instead of the two, 4.2.
Well, the recommendation for the design, back in '73, there was no such thing as the Canadian Bridge Code.
Okay.
There wasn't even a material bridge code that you could hang your hat on. The Canadian says, design something for a minimum of a 50-year storm. We've looked at that. We have the watershed. We've sized the culverts on Balfour for a slightly lesser size because it's not a paved public road that was being used for full loads and whatnot. But the pipes that we put on Balfour are certainly adequate for full load if it ever should get changed to that at some point in time in the future.
Okay.
So we're talking about a standard road loading capability, new pipes, 10-foot, three-meter pipes and excavation and backfill. And we're looking at, I shared something with.
Andrew.
Andrew.
Clementio, yeah.
Andrew, yeah, yeah, yeah. Actually, actually, we are collaborating on putting a cost together. It's a preliminary cost. We really, before the leaves get going on the trees, we need to really do an adequate elevation profile toll station as soon as possible. We need to end up with quantities. We've made estimates. We're looking at about $350,000.
Okay, thank you.
For a replacement there. And to make a long story short, I'll let Steve just tell you why he thinks what he is proposing and what we agree upon is going to be what would fit the bill there and keep that road moving.
Okay, great. Mr. Burt?
I'll probably just reiterate a lot about what John has said. He came to us to read the report and give our opinion on what would be suitable to replace those culverts. I think the upper, the lower soil becomes soft and they were recommending a foundation to support the pipe and a deep foundation to support a pipe. I've never heard of a deep foundation supporting a pipe in the past before. This is the first time I've ever heard it. And I think to put a pipe in the ground, you just need to put like a granular base on there and make sure you've got granular backfill around it properly compacted. Like you said, we walked through that pipe earlier today. There wasn't more than six inches of water in the pipe. There's no evidence that that pipe has settled. I wouldn't think a new pipe would settle any more than that pipe did. For that reason, I don't think a deep foundation, the cost of a deep foundation to support a pipe is really required. We put pipes in the ground for other sites with soft. The blow counts on their borehole logs indicate that you have a firm, the stiff, upper crust and it does become softer with depth. But, you know, you properly, you put a proper pipe in there with proper base, adequate compaction around the pipe, you're really not increasing the load that's there right now. I don't anticipate any settlement or reason to put a deep foundation in.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
And maybe one other thing?
If you might just come up to the podium. We are videotaping and.
Actually, putting this on the web and. Theoretically, theoretically, there should have been cutoff walls on that old pipe because that prevents the water from coming through the holes. You don't want water flowing under the pipe.
Right.
Or if the pipe that's the bottom of the stream corrodes to nothing, then you're having water diving down underneath the pipe and then double rust it from both sides. Our proposal is to have cut off, proper cutoff wall that some people used to avoid putting in because it was extra money. They could just throw the pipe in, backfill it, I don't know. With Steve, we're going to have to have adequate material. And that's going to have a lot of cost to that. That's been allowed for and there's some testing costs for them to make sure whatever we backfill that pipe with, that it's not going to go away, especially with concrete walls at each end, holding the ends of the pipes down and not letting this corrosion get, tear away at the whole structure from under the, under the surface of the water and top of the water, so.
Very good. Thank you.
I think because of the hole in the pipe from the erosion, you're going to get loss of ground into the pipe with the heavy flows and creates a void there.
Right.
And that caused the road surface to fall down.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Members of council with questions? Councilor Rybick?
Thank you. Just a couple of real technical detail stuff.
If you can just come up to the podium, please.
Yeah, please. You were talking about, yes, I don't know who's going to answer the questions, so.
Okay, well, just, we'll stay on here.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions, really. Are you still looking at steel then as the material or are you looking at something else? And then before you answer, just let me ask you other questions so you can answer them both and I can stop then. The other one is, is if we do as you're recommending, what is your expected lifespan of what you're proposing? Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, there are, there's aluminized pipe now and there are polymer-coated aluminized pipes that you can buy and you buy the best coating you can. But you, they, nobody will tell us. It's just been brought out in the last five years. The maybe point you might be getting at, if, if indeed the pipe that we put in there looks like after 10 years it has a rust problem, what we have in the municipalities now is every two years is a culvert inspection. And if something is going in the wrong direction big time, I can't give you, sell you the pipe. I don't make it, but that's what the folks who sell the pipe and they will, there are big companies that make that. So the other advantage of a pipe like this, instead of these multiplate pipes with all the bolts, you can actually, after 30 years, run another pipe of the same, of a similar size but smaller diameter through the pipe and line it and.
Perfect.
Have extra life again for a long time because you grout all the way around it. And they do this typically on four-foot pipes under, under interchanges where they have these pipes going under. They can't dig down to get to them. They line these pipes, but they do it with a polyethylene type pipe. Maybe by then they'll have some polyethylene that's, that's, well, big enough to put in, grout in place.
Right.
You can't do that to the kind of pipes that.
That are there, right.
And besides the cost to ever put them in now, there's 3,000 volts per pipe or more than that. This is all man labor. This is sitting out there at the site with little cranes, lowering plates down, landing the holes up.
So you're not recommending that?
Oh, God, no.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Spreet or Mr. Burt? Councilor Kersey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions, if I might. So you've looked at the Geotech information that was produced by our consulting firm and have examined the soils as in that report that led to their recommendation of deep piles? You've looked at that report?
I did.
And yet, their recommendation is so diametrically opposed to your recommendation. How do we rationalize that?
He's putting you on the spot, Mr. Burt, but go ahead. I think he wants you to rationalize it because it's less cost, but go ahead.
I can't. You'll have to talk to the other consulting firm because I don't understand the recommendation that's had.
So. Maybe you could say On Globe's been around a long time too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And various farms and it's just, can't imagine it.
Sir Kersey?
Just in your summary then, your feeling is that there is a relatively dense crust in the top that using a pipe of the diameter you're recommending, our footprint would spread the load over that crust such that we wouldn't see the settlement that was predicted?
Well, the pipe, the soil beside the pipe weighs a lot more than the area. Because the pipe is creating a large void. So there are going to be more settlement in the, beside the pipe where the soil is because there's more weight there.
Weight.
So it doesn't make sense to have a foundation to sort the pipe, support the pipe.
Okay, councilor?
One of the things that we in the municipal world have to deal with are not only just costs, but, but risks.
Right.
And so I'd like to hear your assessment of the risk. If we proceed with the recommendations that you've put forward, what is the risk to the municipality of not just a bit of settlement or whatever, but of a catastrophic failure of that culvert that would lead to injury or worse? Is there a risk?
I don't know who wants to answer that, Mr. Spreet or Mr. Burt?
Well, there's more than just the soil that supports the pipe. There's the pipe itself.
Right.
And the most important part is the pipe and the soil around it act together. It's important to get proper compaction around the pipe and we specify granular material and we should be there when they place the backfill and do compaction on it to verify that it's done properly. And if it's done properly, there's little risk that you're going to have a catastrophic failure.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Spreet, anything to add to that to help the counselor?
Yeah, actually, actually, pipe put in there properly, that's, that doesn't, that isn't corroded and we're hoping that technology is, I guess I'll have to live 20 more years to know. And I'm 71, I don't know if I'll remember much of it, whatever, but. There's no catastrophic risk to, the pipes we're talking about, they're, they're designed by pipe, by the MTO is the driver of innovation and people always wanting to, all the highways they're building, they're not going to put garbage in the ground in terms of gauges and strength capability, but you, you, you have to have something that's durable and in this case, in many places in the MTO now, they're actually lining those pipes with other kind of pipes if they have to. Because nobody wants to dig a hole 20 feet down in the ground if they can actually slip a new, new one right through and fill the annular space with a grout material and you just keep motoring on. So I don't see any fear of a catastrophic risk being relevant.
Thank you, councilor.
I have one last question, Mr. Mayor. When you were looking at the options for this replacement of this culvert, did you look at the port and place concrete bridge option and cost that out? And I'm just interested to see whether we.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
And the concrete one, and I can look it up here. There's a few numbers floating around, but I'll just make it quick. Opening of this here, I believe, right here. No, let's see here. Come on, please.
Yeah, perhaps, Mr. Spreet, you can get back to us.
400 and something. Do you remember, Andrew?
But it was, it was more, significantly more, yeah.
I think it's 450,000.
450.
But, you know, that, that is never going to rust if you did put a double box culvert in. We happen to have a design in our, in our computers for a culvert of the nature that would go in there. It, it, it could be a good deal on the design of it for engineering cost because we've already got it back 15, 20 years and we have a set of plans that would do suit perfectly for that, that site. But then we also, last year in North Middlesex, we have a triple-pipe installation that's been put in on a fairly major water course, not any smaller than this. And the cutoff walls are in, the pipes came, they're, they're, they're round and not bolted. They're, the best coating, you can't get the best coating on, I don't believe, on plate pipe that you can on the stuff they can dip. And cold form rolled into one pipeline with a good seam. So, really, thank you.
Very much.
One very quick follow-up. Is there, is there a.
The last one.
Expectancy differential between the round pipe and the box culvert, concrete box culvert? And, and what's the magnitude of that?
Well, well, whenever they, we have replaced box culverts and they're always fixing the ends of box culverts. I don't know if you've ever seen, they have crumbly gravel on the top. Air entranment was an additive that put bubbles into the concrete after it was cured and the bubbles would be a place for the water to take up space instead of getting into the pores and expanding and popping the concrete. So the life expectancy of a concrete structure properly, and Steve knows about air entraining and testing of concrete samples and so on, and they, they, this should, obviously, the concrete's going to last a lot longer by a factor of, I would say, 50% than, than a bare steel pipe, you know, against the dirt.
Okay.
Although it has the coating on it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate it. So next steps, Ms. Clementio, we heard from Mr. Spreet that he was anxious to get back down there with a transit and figure out the slopes, et cetera. Just quickly for council, this is an option to receive this report. So what are the next steps and kind of what's your timeframe in order to keeping council up to speed?
Just say one other point. Sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Well, let's hear, let's, is it, is it germane? You've, I'm going to ask Ms. Clementio. Ms. Clementio?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Spreet has been generous so far and hasn't billed us yet. So we set up the PO to be paid for with the remaining budget from the budget that you did free up for the sort of emergency Poth design. So we still have some left there and some in our engineering budget, so I'd like to continue to have Spreet and Associates finish with the survey work and nail down the design so that we are shovel-ready for 2019. With that, we'll also be able to prepare a firmer estimate for budget, capital budget time. And then we could, hopefully, should that be approved, go to tender in January, February and get some competitive bidding for repair next year. So that's the plan. We've let GM Blue Plan know the status and I said I would fill them in on the details of tonight. They're fully familiar. This isn't putting consultants against consultants, but simply strong differences in opinion of some technical data.
Okay, great. So we look forward to. So we look forward to, if that's okay with council, the next steps then will be that survey work and that design and perhaps you can, in a couple, six weeks or something, get something back to council about just an update report. We may not need our professional engineers and other technologists here for that, but just maybe a quick update on where we're at with design, I think would probably be helpful. It's an important part of the town and important structure. And I'm pleased that it's coming in, looks like a favorable number compared to where we were with that other design. So unless there's anything further from members of council, certainly on behalf of council, express appreciation to you, Mr. Speed, and to you, Mr. Burt, for being here this evening through the top part of the meeting during council, but also here for the, for the councillor meeting, the committee meeting. So I'm going to call the question on receiving the report for information and incumbent in that is staff continuing to, to work with Spreet and Associates on the, on the design of this and reporting back to council in a little bit, so. Okay, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion is carried. Thanks again, we appreciate it. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Thanks for the question.
Thank you.
It was a memorable meeting anyway. It was just a beautiful day to be out there walking through some of those places you don't have.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Council, we have another group that's been here for a longer period, a long period of time as well, and so this is item 4.1.3, Site Plan Approval for 105 Highway 20 East. Thanks again. It's been moved by councillor Durley. The committee receives the Department of Community Planning and Development report for information as it pertains to application file number SP 0617, 105 Highway 20 East, and the committee recommend that council direct staff prepare the bylaw that would authorize the mayor and clerk to enter in a site plan agreement between the town and the owner. Comments, questions regarding this particular report in a more urban area of the town? Councillor Kersey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very excited to see this move forward in our process. I think it will add tremendously to the community and specifically to that corner and to what we see when we look down Highway 20, as my friend councillor Pap often asks, what do we want to see down there? And when we look down there and we see that beautiful building, the six stories combining residential and commercial and the, and the townhouse condominium to the rear of it, I think it's a tremendous improvement over what we had there before. And it shows how our community has evolved. You know, at one time where the bank was, was free gas and across the road from Font Hill Lumber was Font Hill Building Supplies. And that was almost like our industrial core and how our community has expanded and we've added residential and how those uses became not so good in the setting that they were in. Not that we don't need them, we do, but not so good where they were. This is much more appropriate, it adds tremendously to the community, and I thank the developer for, for working with our staff and bringing forward such a wonderful development. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, councillor. Any other councillors? Councillor Pap?
Sturko on councillor Kersey, and I'll be very brief, very cosmopolitan, very creative, will enhance the whole development along that corridor and for that matter will set a standard for others to follow. And I'm very excited, all of us are very excited, once you get started on that area and it'll just complement everything else that we've been doing for the last 10 years. So looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Others? Councillor Ribiak?
I'm also very happy to see this. I was pleased to, to be at an event at Lookout where Phase 1 was described, and this, of course, is Phase 2. And I'm just curious to know whether, whether we have some sense of when this part of the project is going to, to go in the ground.
Ms. Wiens, there she is.
Mr. Mayor, through you, so the proposal is to proceed with the townhouse portion of the development first. And so I'm expecting that they'll be probably starting construction in terms of servicing that site fairly soon, likely over the summer months. And then depending on sales, they are going to market on the tower, I believe it is this fall, and depending on uptake on sales of units, we expect them to be starting on that probably next year.
Great. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any others?
I too just want to echo comments from colleagues. Certainly a wonderful design and I was at the event at Lookout as well when you were talking, promoting, promoting this and building on the idea of the yards, the lumber yards, and really incorporating that in the presentation that the proponent, the owner made about that and the, really the transformation that you councillor Pap alluded to and councillor Kersey as well, the transformation of that site. I think we said at the time when the, the plan of subdivision was, was coming in, et cetera, and the changes that were required through the planning process, that the residents in that area are very pleased to see that, that transition from an industrial use, as you described, and the industrial area as it was, the Sobies where it was, you know, et cetera, into something that is very welcoming and stunning at the same time as well and a real addition to the community. I know that you've been working very closely with staff and we appreciate staff working closely with you in order to get this, get this development going. And I understand that sales are going very well as well for the, for the townhouses. So thanks for all to work on it and we look forward to this proceeding. So I'm, I'm going to call the question on the motion. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. We look forward to this being ratified in a couple of weeks by council and that shovel's in the ground and the, the site being revitalized. Congratulations, thank you. Thanks for your patience as well for being here this evening. Now we move back to the regularly scheduled agenda and we are going to be dealing with 4.1.1. Councillor Kersey indicated that he did declare a conflict of interest on that. So as he's leaving the room, I'm going to read the motion. It's been moved by, so he can't move that. So, okay. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Durley. The committee receives the Department of Community Planning and Development report for information as pertains to file, to application file number AM 1017 and SP 0917, 163 Port Robinson Road, and the committee recommends that staff be directed to prepare the proposed zoning bylaw amendment for council approval, and the committee recommends that staff be directed to prepare the bylaw authorizing the mayor and clerk to enter in a site plan agreement between the Town of Pelham and 744530, Ontario, Inc. Questions, comments? Councillor Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was discussed at the, I guess, public meeting on this particular situation was there, I raised some issues in regards to parking for this particular place and I'm just wondering, I don't see any, any changes to anything, and I'm wondering what is the position on, on the parking situation.
Thank you. Ms. Wiens?
Mr. Mayor, through you there, we did discuss with the applicants, consultants, the opportunities to provide for additional parking. The area that is off to the one side could have accommodated perhaps another two spaces. However, that's an area that's used for stormwater management and was important for, for that in terms of dealing with stormwater management and the flows going into the pond as well. It's an area that can be used for snow storage in the, the winter months. So on balance, we felt that it's better to have that space set aside for those kind of things as opposed to the additional parking spaces that could be accommodated. There is parking that could be made in terms of public parking spaces on the street, on Lemetti Drive is a public street that would have on-street parking available. We note that there's at least one space per unit and that, you know, we anticipate that people riding or residing in this apartment building will only have one car, not expecting that this will be an apartment building that will, you know, necessarily have families just given the size of the units and so forth. So we feel that there is adequate parking provided on the site for the residents of the development and that visitor parking would be accommodated in terms of short-term visitors onsite.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Or pardon me, on the, on-street.
Thank you, councillor.
Can I continue?
Yes, please, yeah.
Yes. I'm, I'm not in favor of a development, quite frankly, that is, is going to rely on the street to accommodate parking and things like that. I just, the one we just passed for downtown Font Hill, it's got something like two parking units per unit, two parking spaces per unit, and here we're asking for only one. That's well below the, what's supposed to be under the zoning. And to say, okay, let's park on the street, I just had a little tour of Pelham today and I saw a lot of occasions where people were on the street parking and you're not able to get by and all kinds of situations I wouldn't want to encourage on street parking. We're going to have another one come forward to us in a couple of weeks where they're also proposing a change to parking as far as the number of units. And I can see that's going to be an issue as well because it's not taken into account. I think when people buy property, build something, they, they should be somewhat respectful of what is in the zoning. And just to disregard the zoning and say, well, we won't worry about parking, I don't think is acceptable. So I would not be supportive of this just on the parking alone. I just don't think it's, it's where we should be. You get snowy events and you have people parking on the street and then there's no, there's no other options for them, so I'm really concerned about parking and that's, that's my comments there.
Okay, thank you very much, councillor. Other comments with the proposal? Councillor Ribiak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the question of parking and the number of parking units per apartment, are we not looking at that in terms of the zoning bylaw? What's the thinking there with regard to future zoning bylaws going to be?
Thank you. Ms. Wiens?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you, certainly the new comprehensive zoning bylaw will be looking at the parking standards. You will recall that there was a discussion with council and the consultants with respect to parking and reducing the parking requirements. And I believe that council had indicated that they would like to see the parking reduced down to 1.25 spaces per unit for an apartment unit, which would be a reduction from what the current requirement is.
So the current requirement's 1.5?
1.5, yes.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with regard to, to on-street parking, I believe our, and correct me, please, if I'm wrong, I believe our discussions with regard to, to urban design around East Font Hill was around encouraging on-street parking as opposed to getting away from it in those areas where, where it made sense to do that. That's why we wanted, for example, rear lanes so that the street would not be encumbered with too many driveways thereby reducing the, the opportunity for on-street parking. So I frankly see the design of this being in keeping with where we're going or what we have discussed in the past as to where we're going and see no issue with it myself. But correct me, please, if I'm wrong with regard to my understanding of where we're going on parking.
I think Ms. Wiens has already indicated council's preference. I don't know if, Ms. Wiens, you want to comment any further? I certainly wouldn't want to correct the councillor on anything. You're bigger than I am.
No, just certainly to the one point that councillor Ribiak mentioned, Mr. Mayor, through you, certainly the urban design guidelines for East Font Hill did, they do provide for street cross-sections that provide for on-street parking and that's part of the kind of consideration.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Councillor Durley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but the, through you, the one point that, that was made about the East Font Hill cross-section of streets is that there is a spot that's going to be provided for off-street, on-street parking. This particular case, we don't have that. I have to agree somewhat with councillor Lane in the fact that it, it could cause some congestion going up and down Lemetti with the number of houses that are being built in there, you're going to have overflow parking probably from those as well. So I, I could see it as a, as a challenge in congestion to, to traffic and perhaps to emergency vehicles if they need to go through there. But the, like I say, if, if the design of the street is such that it's providing a place for off-street, on-street parking, that's wonderful, that's great, but if in fact there is no provision for that, the streets such as the one I live on or, or the one Catherine lives on, there's, if you park on the street, the, it does inhibit some traffic. So that is a real concern. So, you know, I'm of mixed mind here as, as far as, you know, how to support. I can see ideally if you limit, and you can't do this, if you have an apartment here, you're going to have one car, but you know, you can't do that. What if people have two cars or, or more? So I, I see it as a challenge.
Thank you, councillor. Any others?
I certainly appreciate the, the proposal and the design. I think this proponent has put together a very interesting design that actually cantilevered the, to get more parking has kind of engineered and cantilevered part of the building over top of some parking that assists with not only increasing the amount of parking that's on the site, but also for inclement weather, et cetera. So I think it's, I think it's in keeping with the design for, for East Font Hill and so I'm in favor of, of the, of the entire development and that includes the parking and especially considering that council has given direction to staff to come forward with a zoning bylaw that has less than the 1.5. So unless there's any others, I'm going to call the question. Councillor Lane?
I'd just like to make one, one further point, Mr. Mayor, if I might, on this. The proposal to reduce the parking and the zoning bylaw is to reduce it to 1.25. And that's one thing, but this is well below 1.25 in this proposal. So I mean, you know, even if you reduce it, here we're, we're still stuck with this and I, I think that, again, I just will not support it based on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Okay, I'm going to call the question on the recommendation. All those in favor? All, myself and all those opposed? Okay, thank you, the motion carries. Thank you. Can we ask the councillor to rejoin us, please? We'll now move on to the next item. It's been moved by councillor Lane. The committee receives the Department of Community Planning and Development report for information as it pertains to application file number HO 1 2018, 495 Camber Road, and the committee recommends council approve the heritage permit to facilitate the dwelling addition in accordance with the plans submitted. Questions or comments?
Exciting that another facility is, you know, heritage facility is included here. Questions or comments? Bye. Thanks to staff for their work. Going to call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor King. The committee of the whole received the April 2018 Community Planning and Development Monthly Report for Information. Questions, comments regarding that particular report?
Councillor Ribiak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm referring to the paragraph with respect to Baxter Hall Site Plan Application. I think we had some, some discussion of that earlier this year, if I'm not mistaken. And the, the entry talks about that revising the... And the entry talks about that revising the number 2017. It seems as though that item has not been updated at all. Or have I got the date wrong? I think we talked about it earlier this spring.
Ms. Weens?
So yes, Mr. Mayor, through you, council will recall, I believe it was at the beginning of March, we passed the bylaw to lift the holding zone on that land, so that's the last time council had dealt with this matter. They did make site plan application last fall. We provided the first round of our comments to them in November and we're waiting for their submission back. My understanding is that we will probably get something within the next two weeks.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything further on that?
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was concerned that maybe you had moved beyond this point, I'm glad that it has. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else to the director's report? Councillor Durley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This isn't directly involving the report as such, however, it is certainly a planning and developing, development matter. If I'm out of order, please tell me so, but I received an inquiry from a person regarding the existence of a unopened road allowance and this person is willing or wishes to purchase land on the other side and marry the two of them together. However, with that existing road allowance, this is now impossible. The applicant, or the potential applicant has spoken to staff and the staff has said that they can't do anything about it and needs to come to council. And if in fact council sees fit to call that road allowance surplus and then open it for sale, that certainly is another question. So I would like to, I've spoken to our director with this and I met with the person who wants this to happen and, like I say, he has talked to staff already. And what I would like to do is to direct, there are complicating matters to this and this is why I would like to ask staff to put a report together to see just exactly the process what would happen and probably engineering might be involved with this as well. There are certain different factors and there are also a active transportation recommendation as well type thing, so there's, it's a complicated matter. If we can get a report to come back so that council can all have a look at that and not necessarily a recommendation report, however, if you do have a recommendation, certainly that could be part of it and if we could discuss it at a meeting coming up, that would be appreciated.
So you'd like to make a motion then?
Yes, I'd make a motion that staff be directed to address this issue with the report coming back to call.
Okay. And are you able to tell us which unopened road it might be?
It's actually, it's a secret.
Ms. Weens?
Mr. Mayor, through you, it's a portion of Hay Street that's unopened.
Oh, okay.
Which goes down to Foss, just about where they grow up.
It's worth a Foss road, yes.
Okay, perfect. So councillor, you'll make that motion to direct staff to?
Yes, sir.
Put together a little bit of a information report for council?
Yep.
To get more information on it and then perhaps? Okay. I will, it's kind of, you've kind of done that in the middle of the report, but I'll still allow it. We'll add that as an addition to the report, how's that? So I'll call the question on that amendment, all those in favor? Any opposed? That amendment carries. Thank you very much councillor Durley. Anything else to the director's report? Okay, just one quick question about the zoning bylaw. We had discussions about that earlier. There's a date that's held in my calendar for later in May. Is that coming forward or do we have a timeline in?
Mr. Mayor, through you, yes, I know we were holding May 28th as a potential date for a public meeting. Unfortunately, we will not be able to proceed with that date. We, hoping that we can get something in June yet. Still working on getting the bylaw kind of in shape so that we can release it publicly.
Yeah.
My staff have been certainly going through it and we've consolidating comments, getting that to the consultants and then they're doing their work. So it's a bit of a moving target at this point, but we're working at trying to solidify date and soon as we do, we'll let you know and advise council.
Okay, that's great, thank you. And I think the most important part is obviously informing the community, getting it out there. Everybody will want to look at their particular property, especially if there's, you know, because of the hundreds of exemptions that are in the community and how those are dealt with. So look forward to that. Councillor Kirsty?
To another matter?
Sure.
Very briefly, I was a little bit surprised to see the Balfour lots on here requiring an EIS and I thought we had approved the plan of subdivision for those street-facing lots and that the land's been cleared and ready to go. So now I see this, so I just?
The different part of Balfour?
Is it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, through you. So the portion of Balfour Street that you're referring to is in Fenwick.
Right.
And yes, that did receive draft plan approval and is currently being developed and, you know, services have gone in. These Balfour lots are the lots that the town owns. These were 12 lots that were created through testamentary device and that portion of Balfour Street is not open. There's provincially significant wetland and woodland there and so that's the reason for the environmental impact study.
Thank you for clearing that up for an old man.
No worries.
Okay, anything further? Thanks very much, Madam Director. All those in favor? Any opposed? So that's carried as amended with the information regarding the unopened road allowance at haste. It's been moved by councillor Rybyak, the committee of the whole received the 2017 fourth-quarter financial reports for information. Treasurer went through some of this earlier in her presentation to council. Anything further? There being none, I call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. And we look forward to future years where that information comes forward to council earlier, thank you. It's been moved by councillor Rybyak, the committee of the whole received the April 2018 Corporate Services monthly report for information. Questions, comments regarding the director's report? If there aren't any, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Appreciate the work and look forward to hearing information about the development charge background study. Now we move to Fire and Bylaw Services, it's been moved by councillor King, the committee of the whole received the April 2018 Fire and Bylaw Services monthly report for information. Comments, questions regarding the chief's report? Councillor Pap?
Very quickly, through you, to the chief. Chief, can you just give us a 30-second rundown about the ongoing issue of the smells along from Balfour and Foss, the cannabis operations? Just, we've had a brief discussion about this.
Chief? Through you, Mr. Mayor. We still continue to go there daily to assess the situation. Complaints are still coming in, depending on the timelines, seem to be more so on the weekends than they do on the weekdays, but we are encouraging you to push things through to Health Canada, the complaints, working track of the complaints, working closely with the operators of the facility. They have a habit, 100% replying, there are days where they emit odors, but they're working very hard at getting it. And the number of complaints is still reducing.
Thank you, chief, that's, thank you for the update.
Okay. Let's hope they get to zero very quickly. Thanks, chief.
Just, while we're on the topic of grow-ups, we've had a real, you're going to get some complaints about this, but the one on Balfour and 20 with the lights, they've got some issues with heat and curtains inside, so at nighttime it looks like a glowing ball. We've had actually a rash of fire calls there, people driving by thinking the fire, you know, sun fire. So went there today, kind of read the riot act to them, threatened to find them because these nuisance alarms. And so they're going to work on that, they're going to be putting in a curtain that will reduce the light by 55%, but will allow heat to escape because if there's too much heat in the buildings, it'll kill the plants. So they're going to be, so if anybody gets calls about the light pollution, they do have a plan.
We have. So I appreciate, appreciate you updating council on that and working with them, thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Councillor Lane?
Yes, this is not on the marijuana issue or anything.
Oh, it isn't, okay. Anything, so on the cannabis or the medical marijuana? Okay, go ahead.
Just a question for the chief. Could you enlighten me as to the hours that the bylaw people work in the town of Pelham? Are they on a fixed shift or are they on a as-needed basis as far as?
Here, Mr. Mayor, we have one full-time officer who works Monday to Friday, 3:00 to 4:30, and we have a part-time officer that has flex hours, depending on the workload. He works some days, some afternoons and some weekends, depending on, depending on the time of year and what events are taking place.
Thank you. Thanks councillor. Councillor Kirsty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, a comment and secondly, a question about the health and safety. My first comment is, a couple of weeks ago, I arrived at the scene of an accident shortly after the accident occurred in which there were some injuries, called 911. And I must say, hats off to our fire department, first responders, they were the first ones there from station number three. They were well-organized, very efficient in dealing with the injuries and the scene and secured the scene and then shortly thereafter, the EMS arrived and your crew worked with them very diligently, chief, so hats off to them. Please pass that on to station three for me, I'm most impressed with them. The question I had with respect to the health and safety management, it appears here on the timeframe that we're looking to completion by the end of December, is that a fair read of that or is that this phase starts in December and is going to continue at some point after that? Do we have a, now that we've hired the individual and he's had a chance to look at everything?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the contract person has been retained for up to 18 months. This matrix here only covers the first part, big part, but the first part, but beyond this, there's still the overall structure of the health and safety program that we're going to put in place. Really, the goal is when this gentleman walks away from here, we're going to have a comprehensive, fully in place, you know, like one-stop shop. We won't have to reinvent the wheel, it'll all be in place and we'll just have workplace procedures and step, guidelines and policies to follow to keep this in line.
Okay, councillor.
Just a second question. So is the plan then, once he completes the, bringing us all back in line with legislation and they have all the procedures and policies in place, is it the plan then to periodically have a health and wellness officer come back to review where we are in light of legislative changes, et cetera? Or is it the plan that through an educational component of this, our in-house staff will be able to keep up with the legislation, keep us on track with where we need to be?
Well, it's kind of twofold. So our goal is for, once we get all the policies and procedures in place, all the work step procedures, all our non-compliance issues that were brought out in the audit, once we have that all in place, then the coordinator or the health and safety expert, he is going to work with the health and safety team and educate us on how to do things properly on a regular basis and be consistent. So we keep, and then the second part of that is, we will do, we will be audited, because this is what brought this about, is we brought somebody in to look at our plan and he said, hey, you got issues. So once we get this in place, I don't know the frequency, it's once a year, once every couple of years, or maybe the clerk could maybe answer that better, what the frequency of that audit is, but I would expect to be audited every few years thereafter.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Anything else for the chief? I'll call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you. It's been moved by, it's already dealt with Poth Report, so now that it's been moved by councillor Kirsty, committee of the whole received the April 2018 Public Works monthly report for information. Questions, comments? Kudos to cemetery staff for the acknowledgement from the funeral home, out-of-town funeral home, so congratulations, it's always nice to get those. Quick update from the director, anything on the windstorm? Lots of activity on Friday. I know I, some people called me about a limb that was over the road and I sent something, an email off and within an hour it was all dealt with, so kudos to staff. Is there anything further you want to add for 30 seconds?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we're still cleaning up and we'll be cleaning up for some time. We've had to put some other tasks aside, but it'll take us a while to get caught up.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Kirsty, you're signaling here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I noted that we received notification from Well and Wastewater that Hurricane Road Sewer Pumping Station was approaching a level of concern. And I just am a little bit surprised by that in that we have been through, had numerous studies there looking at all the extraneous inflow into the sanitary sewers and really have not identified a whole lot. So how do we explain that and mitigate that?
Ms. Clentio?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Hurricane Road sanitary sewer capacity remains an issue. We have simply put some protocols into place with the region, so we're notified much sooner. So it used to be we would get that call once the wet well level had been exceeded and we were having to initiate bypass, although it never reached that point. We just wanted to have much more notice to be prepared should that happen. So you remember, we had a bypass event last year, it was the first one we've had. And this one is really just putting the plan in motion because it takes us a while to locate the equipment to prepare for that bypass. But the remaining issue of hurricane is there, we have the upgrading of the hurricane sewer main on our development charge bylaw radar because it's triggered by growth, not by condition. As well, we do have ongoing condition surveys, remember we had the inflow and infiltration study done, unfortunately because it was 2016, it was a very dry year, we had quite a lot of inconclusive data. So with funding from the region, we're hoping to continue that program and hurricane is one of the areas we're trying to pin down. It appears to be more of an inflow issue, which means people tied into the system, sump pumps and downspouts, rather than infiltration. We haven't found much leaking in of groundwater or pour joints and that sort of thing. So we're continuing to investigate, we've opened up the former program with the smoke testing from several years ago to find out where that stood and what the status of that was. So we're trying to get all those wheels in motion, but the capacity issue remains, it became a red flag at the lumberyard application because we wanted to make sure we could accommodate those additional flows without putting the neighborhood at further risk, so we're looking into it.
Okay. Well, I'm sure council colleagues, all council colleagues look forward to an update and a resolution of this. This was a few years ago that, you know, it reared itself as an issue and the backflow preventer program seemed to help at least the homeowners, but not solve the problem. So the smoke testing, to continue that is key and to get that figured out, you know, what is the issue? So I don't know if the council wants to add anything, but I think maybe just a quick report to council on the status of this, especially given that there's other development in the area pending.
That's fine.
Okay. So if we can have that, it's kind of an understanding there that, it sounds like you're doing some investigation, but also it sounds like council is looking for more information. Anything further in the director's report? Okay, and that direction's included in this, I got to call the question, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion's carried, thank you. Now we move to councillor Lane. Has moved the committee of the whole received the April 2018 Recreation, Culture and Wellness monthly report for information. Questions or comments? Some great community work there, thanks for the cleanup days, organizing that and the tree planting, to the director and many, many other activities that this department is involved in. Are you ready for calling the question? Councillor Durley?
Just one very minor point, if I'm looking at the comparison of April 2018 to April 2018, I'm sure it's meant to be 2017 to 2018, the blue is 2017, I believe.
Maybe that can be corrected?
A typo, I'm sure.
We will correct it.
We will correct it.
Thank you. Going to call the question as amended. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor Durley. The committee to hold receive the April 2018 Clerk's Department Monthly Report for Information. Questions, comments? Kudos to staff on the initiation of the inbox. Totally a staff initiative and thank you very much for doing that. Fifteen questions come on various topics and no doubt there'll be more. Anything further on the clerk's report? Thank you, Madam Clerk. It was nice to meet some of the new staff person here that started as well. Going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. It's been moved by councillor King. The chief, committee to hold receive the April 2018 Chief Administrative Officer's monthly report for information. Questions, comments? Councillor Riviac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I note the time and I hope that this can go reasonably quickly. In reading the CAO's report, I, none of us could help but note the discussion with regard to the relationship between the region and Pelham. And in particular, the recommendation made by the CAO that we attempt to recover the costs that were incurred in dealing with that entire chapter. And I'd like to, it's not embedded within the motion, simply to receive the report. So I would like to make a motion that in fact, we do take that recommendation and attempt to recover the expenses that be incurred in that episode from the region. And if we have time, we can talk about why. But it may not be necessary because we may all be of one mind. We can just do that, but...
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think that the entire episode that resulted in the expenses we received was completely unnecessary. And it was unnecessary because when information or complaints were made to the region with regard to what was happening in Pelham, what should have happened is that those making the complaint should have been directed back here because it wasn't within the region's jurisdiction. But also, it should have been referred back to here because we as a council, and I think we as, and staff in Pelham, had never given the region, or anyone else for that matter, any reason to, any reason to believe that the information that we would have to offer or the answers that we would have to give, or that there was any reason at all to become involved. There was no basis upon which to suggest that any response made by the town of Pelham would be anything but accurate and truthful and effective. And so to take the action that they did in the motions that they made, the demands that they made for information, it's completely without basis. It could have been settled very easily if they had questions that had arisen to simply ask us. We would have given them the information. In fact, we did give them the information quite extensively. And it should simply have been accepted, but it wasn't. And so we went through months of work, time, effort, energy, money, stress, reputation, our public reputation as a town, personal reputations of all of us here on council and on staff. I think that there was an awful, awful cost that resulted from all of that. And as I say, completely unnecessarily because of course, the information that we had offered from the outset, proven many times over to be, to have been accurate, should have been accepted in the first place and none of that happened. So we're not going to get back the sleepless nights. We're not going to get back the arguments. We're not going to get back any of the stress. Perhaps the only thing we can get back is the money. And I think that there is an argument to be made in support of that recommendation that because that money had been spent unnecessarily, we should make the attempt to recover it. That's how I feel, Mr. Mayor, and I hope that you and colleagues feel the same.
Okay. Thank you. To the amendment, councillor Durley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support what was just said 100%. In this report, the treasurer's memo states a cost of a little over $165,000. That's hard costs. But as pointed out by councillor Riviac and what we witnessed staff going through during that whole time, number one, the staff time that was involved. Number two, the stress and duress that they were under is there. So we should be looking at something to compensate for that as well. Not only that happening, but while staff was forced to do this extra work, the day-to-day work that they're paid to do had to suffer as well. So it took a large toll all the way around and unnecessarily, as pointed out by two reports we've got from the ombudsman and from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. So this number of 165 should be inflated to give some consideration to all of the stress and duress that staff had to go through and all of the time that staff was put under the gun in order to answer questions that have been answered 16 times over and again. So I support that 100%. Just the, like I say, without the hard costs, there should be something for soft costs there as well. And I say probably the soft costs were harder than the hard costs. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Others? To the amendment, councillor Cursey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too will support the amendment. I think, I agree with councillor Durley's amendment to the amendment. I think we should try to put some quantum around the hours that were spent by staff putting together the responses, attending at council meetings, attending with solicitors. All of that adds up to cost. And my guess would be we'd be in the quarter million dollar range.
Yeah.
Undoubtedly. So I think we need to add to the 165, the cost of our staff. We'll never gain, get back the time lost on projects that could have been directed to the betterment of the community.
Yeah.
But at least we should be able to recover the quantum that we had expended to defend ourselves. So I would support councillor Durley's amendment to the amendment. And let's have staff be directed to put some quantum to staff hours and go forward with advancing our claim to the region and see where it ends up.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't recognize councillor Durley's comments as a full-fledged amendment. Is that what the councillor was wanting or was it more?
I think councillor Cursey has summed it up. If it needs to be an amendment, it has to be an amendment in order to recognize the fact that there are more than just the hard costs that are there. So in fact, I would be more than willing to call it an amendment to be looked at and to support the building upon which councillor Cursey put in, I think solves the case.
Okay, thank you. So we're now debating an amendment to add additional costs for staff time. We don't know exactly what those might be or the estimate might be. I guess incumbent in that is directing staff to kind of calculate what those might be. So others to that, councillor Pap?
Just a word of caution. I couldn't agree more. The hard costs are there. Ask them directly for that with a carefully worded letter indicating that there were other soft costs. I'm looking down the future of where we're going to go with the region. They're there to exist and we're here to exist. We need to recover what we put out, which was, to say the least, unwarranted. Didn't need to be done, especially now. So whether people agree with that, I've worked in both two regions and I want to reestablish, as the minister said, our relationship with them. So yes, ask them for the money. That's money we put out. If you can quantify to staff what the other soft costs are, then do that. And let's see what happens in the next few weeks.
Any others to councillor Durley's amendment? I just want to comment. I agree with councillor Pap in terms of, you know, there's the hard costs and then there's the soft costs. I'm not in favor of necessarily quantifying the soft costs because somebody can say, well, is that really what you did? I think the, you know, the hard costs are the hard costs. And so I'm not, I'm sorry, no offense to the councillor, but I'm not in favor of the amendments, the amended, the amendment to the amendment, but I am in favor of the First Amendment. So I'm going to be voting against that, councillor Durley.
Speaking to that, Mr. Mayor, there needs to be a recognition that there are soft costs involved because of the stress that was put down. This was the intent of my comment and, you know, to look at a specific number. Maybe that's out of order. However, to indicate that there was cost and there was a lot of stress involved and a lot of things that our staff had to suffer, needs to be mentioned and needs to be understood by everybody.
Thank you. I agree as well. Councillor King?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that if we're going to try to recover the costs, there is absolutely no harm in claiming soft costs as well. Claiming soft costs as well, but making a statement that we are looking for reimbursement of our hard costs. So that they do have an idea of what the total cost of all of this was to the municipality. But because it is unwarranted, we are looking for hard cost recovery. That's my recommendation.
Thank you. I'm going to need a motion by councillor Riviac that the rules of procedure as contained in the town of Pelham procedure bylaw be suspended. Specific meeting time of 10:00 PM being is hereby waived. The remainder of the business listed on the agenda for the meeting continue to be considered until all matters have been concluded. Call the question. All those in favor? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. So I don't know what we have for the motion. And are we ready to call the amendment? I mean, I like what you're saying, councillor. I don't know how to word it. But unless we direct staff to kind of come up with the wording for it? Are you able to give us sort of? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Cursey?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're using the term soft costs a little bit too freely. Loss payroll expense is not a soft cost. It's a hard cost. Soft costs might be in the stress and wear and tear and the duress. That's soft cost, very difficult to quantify. Hard costs are the cost of the hours spent by our staff. That is a hard, real cost. It came out of the taxpayers' money and there's a lost opportunity cost there because while they were distracted dealing with the nonsense at the region, they weren't doing our work. It's impossible to do two things in the same minute. So I think we need to be careful on that. And that's why I'm suggesting that we try to put quantum around the staff costs because I truly believe they are hard costs.
Okay. Okay, so what's additional cost for staff and time? Direct staff to calculate those costs? Okay, so is that what the amendment is, councillor Durley? And it's kind of in keeping what?
I'll agree to that. Definitely, there should be, should be something for that particular.
I have report back. I'm in favor of that now. Let's get a number. Okay, so all those in favor, I'm, given that change and that it makes sense, so I'm going to vote in favor and let's see what colleagues do. All those in favor of councillor Durley's amended amendment? Unanimous? Thank you. Now to the amended, now to the amendment, the original amendment as amended? Anything further regarding those costs, the hard costs, I guess? Councillor Riviac, real quick, because you spoke about it already.
That's right. I'm just going to look for a short time on this. A short deadline on this work. Next council meeting?
Yeah, I think staff can... Councillor Pap?
I agree. And I think it should be succinct, non-personal. And I hate to use this word, but at times we have to be, we may need legal expertise. Let's put this to bed once and for all and let them know that in the future, whoever that may be in the, who was ever leading this, this type of collaboration is unacceptable. This type of intrusion. I said it, you remember that, a year ago when this first came? I said it right off the bat. There's no business being in our business. And thank God to our colleagues in the other municipalities, they've also picked up on this. I know this. So this will set a standard and whether they pay us or not, the point is that on the record, we put out money and let alone, and how, let alone how many of us, all of us for that matter, reputation wise and that, were challenged and, you know, unfairly. Really unfairly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Just if there's no one else, I'd like to, I think I'd be interested to know what the community thinks as well.
So would I.
Because the, you know, the hard costs as are identified with the memo from February of $165,000 represents, I think it's in the CAO's report, something like 1.5% on the taxes. Would you want your taxes to be less by 1.5% on the town side? Or do you want to, or do you want to, would you want to pay this? Like, you know, I think people will be, will go crazy with this and say, what are we doing paying all this? And so I want to hear from the public. I want to hear from people. And we heard from the people on the other side and we reacted. I want to hear from folks. So I hope that we can perhaps ask. That'd be nice. So I'm going to call the question on the amendment as amended. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carried. Others to the actual sort of substance? I need to say this. The real matter and the reason why we're talking about all of this is because of what the substance in the CAO's report. That there was this difference. We heard one thing from Infrastructure Ontario. We heard another from regional council, regional chair specifically, and this regional CAO. We heard from Infrastructure Ontario that afternoon. And I think the CAO indicates that they'd signed the acknowledgement. And then low and behold, that night on March 22nd, we heard the regional chair saying that Infrastructure Ontario doesn't need anymore. What we've learned and we did, you know, staff did the freedom of information request. We learned why they didn't need it, because they already signed something. And it is, it's disheartening that this just appears to be misleading. And to build on what you said, councillor Pap, as the minister said, we should be working together and not this kind of, these kind of misleading statements. If it is that, it is that. If it's that, it's something different, you know? Don't kind of monkey around with words. And that's how I feel that we've been treated. To say that all of a sudden, poof, it wasn't required. Meanwhile, we found out that the reason it wasn't required is because he sent an acknowledgement letter. Say that. Say that. Be truthful to people. I sent an acknowledgement letter and here's why and it's done. Thank you. Don't mislead people. And that's unfortunately what happened here. I think it will cause a lot of people to wonder, you know, what's being said on other issues as well. Which isn't right. Which isn't right. We need to get past this. And so it's almost like we're reliving this sort of thing and we do need to move on to the next chapter. So I do want to hear from folks about what they think about this and whether in their determination, we should go after these costs to the region, which are the hard costs. And now we're going to get a quantifying number for the personnel costs. And also what they think about the, what was discovered here, the misleading statements from both the regional chair and the regional CAO. It causes to question even further that relationship. And we're supposed to be working together. So anyways, I'm sorry, councillor, I went off. But I needed to say that. I think it's an important issue.
You got to say it, Mr. Mayor. And if you make a mistake, I said this to somebody, be, stand up, be humble enough and have the chutzpah to say you made a mistake and I'm sorry. People respect that. That's...
You're exactly right.
You know, you screwed up, you screwed up. So what? You know, let's move on.
Thank you.
Sorry, I got to say that.
No, that's...
I'm tired of this, you know? Deny, deny, deny.
Sorry, I've got to say that. I'm tired of this, you know? Deny, deny, deny. Stand up.
Stand up and be counted.
To the next municipality.
Okay. So, I'm going to call the question on the report as amended. Thanks, Mr. CAO and staff. We look forward to some more information coming forward, and we look forward to hearing from the public. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. One other quick thing. I added this to the agenda. So, it's been moved by Councilor Ribiak, that the Committee to Hold Receive Correspondence from Rod Tripp dated April 18th, 2018 regarding PMK marking 54, Regional Road 54, which is Rice Road, for information. I would ask colleagues if we can invite a representative from the region to give us an explanation of what's being planned along Rice Road, and maybe ask them to come to a council meeting. I know that council has been on record saying that we're interested in a roundabout in that area, so let's hear why, or why not. And I've also received calls from folks talking about curbs and gutters and things like that. So, if we can include in this, Councilor Ribiak, that we invite the region, a regional representative to make a presentation to an upcoming council meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay. Councilor King?
I just have a question. Is this who held the information session at the library?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It is, and that's a result. I didn't, I wrote to Mr. Tripp because I hadn't seen anything. I believe Ms. Wiens, as it says in the correspondence, was present there, but I think it was just residents in the area that were notified. It wasn't for the broader community, as I understand it. But, so I wrote to Mr. Tripp asking for the plan. He forwarded it to us. Do you want to add anything to that, Ms. Wiens?
Being serious.
Okay. So, receive and invite region to upcoming council to present. Going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Moved by Councilor Durley, that this regular meeting of Committee to Hold be adjourned until the next regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May 22nd, 2018. That's a Tuesday because of the holiday. Going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all. Long meetings.